Good evening, everyone.
Mr. President, you got you got a new setup there? You're muted.
Not yet. Supply chain issues. I want to buy a new iPad and they are all at Gen 8, Gen 9.
We can see, we can hear you and see you.
So it seems to be working better.
Oh, I see.
There we go.
Excellent. Okay, so I I note that the time is 5:30 and I'm gonna call the work session to order. And before I turn it over to our council president, I will ask our town manager to read the disclaimer.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, just a friendly reminder to everybody that this meeting is being recorded. I am working on admitting people, but as you know, if you've entered, there's a waiting room for security purposes. If the meeting is interrupted for whatever reason, we will promptly end the meeting and send out a new invitation for people to to rejoin. I'm also working on editing the chat function so that people can chat with me directly so that I might help facilitate the conversation and pass that along to the council as needed. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you're gonna you're gonna quickly disable the chat, right?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, Mr. President. Break a leg.
Hopefully not. Okay, welcome everyone to the council work session. And like to jump into it with the Budget Committee presentation on ARPA, providing some additional information as we continue our dialogue.
Is, I guess, is Phil?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
He's there. He's there.
Right.
Okay, thanks very much, Steve. So I'll get started then. First, I'd like to thank council members Kabir Kumar and Robin Barr for all the useful discussions that we had in order to prepare for this work session. I'd also like to thank Ann Kelly Bolton and John Medallia, the other members of the Budget Committee, for their help in putting these recommendations together. I think it's fair to say that there's a unanimous consensus among Budget Committee members regarding these recommendations. Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank Town Manager Matt Trowinger for his help in collecting and analyzing all the numbers. In order to save time, since the talking points were distributed in advance of this work session, I'm gonna focus on a couple of the more critical recommendations here, and this should allow us more time for Q and A. It's important to keep in mind that even before the pandemic started, the Budget Committee had raised concerns about possible structural changes in our revenue outlook. In fact, this is why the last five-year plan included a possible property tax increase in fiscal year 23. There's still a lot of uncertainty as to exactly why we experienced an almost $400,000 or 30% drop in income tax revenues in fiscal year 21. In technical discussions with the Director of the Bureau of Revenue Estimates for the State of Maryland, he was concerned that some underlying factor might be negatively affecting Somerset's revenues more than other similar municipalities. However, it was not possible to pin it on anything specific, so it was left as something to be monitored closely. While the drop in revenues may be due to unknown structural changes, it may also simply be due to revenue volatility. Somerset can experience large volatility in its revenues. It just takes one or two high-income families to move in or out of town to cause large swings in income tax revenues. Partly reflecting this longstanding volatility, as well as the need to address uncertain expenditure needs, the Town Council approved a rainy day fund resolution in 2014. Now is about over seven years ago. The resolution expresses the council's intent to build over time a rainy day fund equivalent to 12 months of operational expenditures. Having a solid reserve cushion is the best way to deal with revenue volatility. We're still not where we want to be in terms of reserves. The rainy day fund is expected to be at the equivalent of less than nine months of operational expenditures by end June 2022. Moreover, when we extrapolate the revenue shortfall over the next four years using the Treasury Guidance Note as a formula, we see a shortfall of almost $3 million. So the big picture is one of below-trend revenues, suboptimal reserves, and an ARPA grant, $1.2 million, that covers less than half of the projected revenue shortfall. Therefore, a key Budget Committee recommendation is that the council consider any new spending cautiously and integrate it into the overall budget, so priorities can be decided with the full picture in mind. If the council decides that certain new spending is a high priority, and if the town is to maintain a prudent level of reserves, then, given the still fragile fiscal situation, it may be necessary to increase property taxes beyond what was foreseen in the last five-year plan. We will have a better handle on the near-term outlook when we prepare our fiscal projections for end fiscal year 22. This will happen early next year. There's a strong consensus among Budget Committee members that any new spending should be weighed against an updated revenue outlook, all other spending priorities, and the reserve situation. The best time to do this is when we formulate the annual budget early next year. Thank you. Any questions?
So, Mr. President, can I can I ask Phil to say something first?
Yes, please.
So, Phil, thank you for that outstanding report and for all the hard work of your committee. But I I wanted to ask before you get take questions from the council, is what is your recommend, what is the committee's recommendation regarding a structure for this decision-making? Because because all these recommendations need to be need to be implemented within some kind of structure, because right now we have none for that money. So did you, I I I take it that the committee is willing to be involved with recommendations? So so do you have a proposal for a structure? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I mean, in terms of the structure of how to decide, obviously, we have to follow Treasury guidance to begin with, and I think everybody's familiar with that guidance. We can, we can use the ARPA grant to cover revenue shortfalls with certain exclusions, or it can be used to cover certain very specific types of expenditure such as infrastructure. Now, how do we decide what to spend it on? That's where the Budget Committee recommendation is. It should be decided in the context of the big picture. You can't decide it in isolation. You can't just look at the ARPA grant and say, let's spend it on X, Y, and Z. You need to look at the whole budget, and that's why we, the Budget Committee, think that it should be done at the time of the annual budget review, which is going to be coming up in the next few months. And the council will have to decide the appropriate expenditure priorities. Should we spend this money on on roads, on stormwater management, on LED lighting? Do we need to build reserves at the same time? You need to look at the whole picture before.
Okay, so you're so you're saying, so let me stop right there. So you're saying that these funds should be added to as a line or something in the budget? Because right now, there's there, we don't have a structure for it. It's just sitting there. And yes, there are all these guidelines, but so you're saying that you want to add that to, you want to blend that in to the document that it's going to be, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it should be included as a separate line under grants.
Okay.
With the recognition of the nature of these grants, that they're one-time. We're gonna get one portion of it in fiscal year 22 and one portion in fiscal year 23, and then they're not going to be repeated. And we have to build that into the five-year plan and recognize that one-one-time nature so that we don't start funding expenditures that have long-term liabilities.
I think that's excellent. So before, one of my my follow-up question is to the town attorney. How is that achieved? Does that need to be achieved through any kind of legislation?
No, I would recommend a motion, the council to accept the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
So so we could put that on the agenda for the for the January meeting? That, yeah, okay, so do you need to prepare something for the for someone to, it would be introduced, should it be introduced then? Should it be on an emergency? What do you, what do you suggest?
Yeah, I think we can just prepare a simple resolution and have it adopted at the the January meeting.
So so it needs to, so would you suggest that it be introduced tonight, or what do you?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now I'll turn that over for for the president to decide. Thank you very much. Thank you, Phil.
Sure, my pleasure.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You actually sort of merged as as very appropriate the the first two agenda items for tonight. Budget Committee presentation, the process for expenditure. And and, you know, personally, I I fully support your, you and the Budget Committee are recommending, Phil. But I'd like to hear if there are any questions or comments from our council members while we have you available. Yeah, just in sort of random order, Debbie, are you, do you have any questions or comments?
You're muted, Debbie.
Sorry. Hi, Phil. I I'm wondering, is there any data that the town could collect in the future to better predict fluctuations in revenue?
Not really, to be honest. It's it's almost impossible to predict the direction of those fluctuations. I can predict with certainty that we're going to have fluctuations, but I can't, I can't tell you just which way they're going to go. And that's why I emphasized the rainy day fund as the optimal way to deal with those fluctuations that are uncertain, because if they are, if if, for example, we get a sudden drop in revenues, then we have the rainy day fund to rely on to help us get through that period.
Could I add something here? That in January, early January, we will be getting the new assessments for Somerset. That does not necessarily mean that our total assessed value will go up.
Property taxes.
Real estate prices seem to have gone up, but that will give us some additional information that that could be of help in projecting future revenues. Over.
Yeah, I was I was referring just to income tax revenues, Debbie, not property taxes.
I think I was referring to that too, I suppose.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Phil.
Sure.
Thank you, Debbie. Shannon?
Yeah, I was just wondering, and I don't know, you might have answered this already, but do we have any idea as far as like income taxes, like what is gonna be the result for this past, this year?
Yes, we do. For the, we're in fiscal year 22, and we've already received the November distribution. And the way income taxes work, once we get that November distribution, we have a very good idea as to where we're gonna end fiscal year 22, because several other months are either equal to or a portion of that November distribution. And based on that November distribution, we're currently projecting that we're gonna be within $1,500 of our projection, which is just over $1 million. So we're we're pretty much spot on at this point, based on that November number.
And how does that compare with the the year that was the shortfall?
Let me see if I can.
Shane, that's a great question, and I've been going back and forth with Phil to to get some graphics that might help explain the trends. I don't know if Phil, if you can present, or if we can ask Matt to present.
I I can try to share. I think I have those files handy. But just first, let me answer Sharon's question, and then I'll show you that chart we were looking at, Steve. The shortfall, let me go back to fiscal year 20, the audited figure, we had $1.2 million of income tax revenue. In fiscal year 21, that fell to $860,000. That's the almost $400,000 drop I was talking about. And for fiscal year 22, the current year, we're expecting it to be at just over $1 million, $1,320,000.
So we're not back to like the 2020 levels, but we're not where we were last year.
We're still $200,000 short of the fiscal year 20 level. Yep. Now, let me see if I can share my screen with you. Matt, we're gonna, I'm gonna try and do this, right? And let's see. Um. That. It's a different tab. Let me go over here, then. Let's see if this works. Do you see this chart now?
Let's see.
Yeah.
Everybody can see the chart?
No.
No, okay. Share screen. I have to pick from here. Show all windows. Let's go here. Share. Okay.
That's promising.
Got it.
Got it? Okay, so.
There we go.
This is a graph that was given to us, provided by the Director of Revenue Estimates for the State of Maryland, Mr. Schoffler, Andy Schoffler. So it goes to 2018, but the point remains the same. The green line in the top half of the chart is average adjusted gross income, not taxes, but just income for Somerset. The orange reddish line in the middle is Montgomery County, and the blue line is the state of Maryland. You can see from this chart immediately how much more volatile income is in Somerset than either in Montgomery County as a whole or the state of Maryland. And that's what we have to deal with. It's because we have a small municipality, and if one or two high-income households come in or out, it can have a huge effect on our income tax base. So I hope that answers the question.
Yep, that's great. Thank you, Phil.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I I didn't mean to be speaking for Shannon, but I think that's what I hope you would show.
Okay, yep. I'm gonna stop sharing that now. Is that, is that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, and we're all back.
Yeah, um, those are my questions. Thank you.
Could I just add another obvious point of volatility is what happens with the stock market? I'm sure that a lot of people in Somerset are invested in it, and, you know, this year the stock market has gone up quite a bit. So hopefully that will help with our revenue, but we'll see. Over.
Yeah, thanks for making that point, John. I'd also like to just mention that several years ago, Robin Barr and I, Council Member Barr, who was on the Budget Committee at the time, we we looked at the data extensively. We did a number of different regressions, looking at the stock market, capital gains, income, property values, and bottom line, we couldn't find any significant relationship. It's it's very hard to do. But these are all factors that could influence income taxes, as John says. It's just, we can't use those to help us predict where income taxes are going to go in the future. And that's why having this solid rainy day fund is so important, and and why we've been aiming over several years now to get to 12 months of operational expenditures. And we're hopefully gonna be at about nine by June of next year.
Great. Thanks again. Kabir, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks, Phil, for the presentation.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Kabir. Robin?
Yeah, first of all, I absolutely agree with Phil that there is no method or way we can actually estimate our total income two years down the line. And in fact, estimating it this year is is still even that, a little bit dicey. But the other point is, Phil, you're you're saying some two things that don't align. One is that our income is volatile, and the other is that using the Treasury growth rate, we we have a $3 million loss over three years. Well, of course, we can't use the Treasury growth rate for Somerset because we are volatile, you know? In other words, we we don't know, there is uncertainty over what our loss will be over over three years. It looks like there is a structural factor that is contributing to our loss. And if that is true, and that seems to be what the State Controller's Office believes too, that there is some kind of structural factor, then we will show lower revenue over the next few years. But it's still, if, in the air. Phil, is there, if I said anything that upsets you there, that seems to be the.
No, I I would, I actually agree with you, Robin. I mean, that shortfall of $3 million is is a projection itself. And so it's it's equally as unreliable as any projection of income taxes.
Right.
But it's it's, that's why I emphasized it was based on the Treasury Guidance Note, where they they allow us to just take the average growth rate over the previous four years, starting in a certain base year, and then project that out relatively. We project our own revenues, and then the difference is the shortfall.
Yeah, I mean, another way of saying it is 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 what I was trying to hint at, which is the Controller's Office thinks there's a structural factor behind it, which means that our revenues are not really gonna bounce back over the next few years the way we would expect them to, and we should be aware of that. That's that's what it involves.
Yes, and I would totally agree with you, Robin. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? Sorry.
Absolutely.
Um, so what about the year before 2020? Like, was that, if we had like 1.2 in 2020, 860, and then, you know, we're at 1 about for 2022? What happened in the prior years?
So I'm just looking at my file now. I don't know if I need to share it, but the income tax, if you want, I can share this file too, so you can actually see the number. Should we try that?
I like the other file too, because it shows going back about 20 years.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to share that.
Stable, the the real estate tax has been with slight fairly regular growth over the years, and the income tax has just bounced around.
Yeah, so I think you can, can you see all, can you all see this table and chart now?
Yeah.
Okay, so Sharon, to answer your question, in 2019, income taxes were 1.2 million rounded, a little bit less than they were in 2020. And then 1,028,900 in 2017, down a bit from the previous year. If you look at the chart below, you can see the income tax going all the way back to, let me move this over just a little bit, so you see the whole picture. From 1990 to 2021, income taxes are the red line, and they're driving revenues, you can see. Those two are pretty much in parallel, since income taxes are the majority of our tax revenues. And they they go up and down. That's in real terms, the the graph.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's interesting, because like if you look at, you know, so so when you, when you look at it in terms of like, what is the new normal, like, what is the anomaly? Like, you know, 2020 really appears to be a high. And so, and, you know, going backwards from that, you know, there was no year that was anywhere near, you know, that, those kind of numbers. So like, if you look at 2016, they're at 1, and then 919, and then 1, and then this 1.189, or, and then 1.2. So, um, you know, it it's definitely like, gives me more, um, you know, in in looking at like, you know, what what's gonna be this new normal with those numbers? And, um, so I think that bouncing back from that 860 is definitely good, and then we're bouncing back to kind of more like a 2018 number. Um, so I don't have as much like, you know, fear that like, you know, we're not gonna hit that 1246, I guess, I would say. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, it's super interesting. Um, but, you know, 2021 was just such a crazy year with people and jobs and all of that. It's good to see it bounce back, and I mean, I think it will be higher than that for 2022, personally.
So let let's hope. It looks like it will be for fiscal year 2022. So let, let, let's hope. It looks like it will be for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Fingers crossed. Um, what I would mention here, uh, and a point that Councilmember Barr also made. Um, if you look at this chart, you can see that basically, starting in around twenty ten, that was the trough. Uh, I would say there was a fairly clear trend upwards through about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Then we hit this sharp drop in twenty twenty-one. And so that, that's one year so far. Um, we really need more time to evaluate whether this is gonna be permanent or not, whether it's a new normal or just a transitory blip. And at, again, the Director of, of, um, Revenue Estimates for the State of Maryland said he, he, he feared there might be some structural changes going on, but we all agreed we couldn't find a clear, specific reason why that would be the case, just for Somerset. It seemed to be different than other municipalities. Um, so we're gonna monitor it closely. We're gonna continue to watch the numbers. We're gonna hope that it rebounds, uh, as it has done so far in fiscal year twenty-two. But if it doesn't, that's all the more reason why we need that rainy day fund, just in case.
Um, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Phil, numbers are not my strong point, but, um, I guess I'm wondering, our revenues seem even, the projected, you know, even when they were in twenty twenty, they seem a little low for this neighborhood. Am I, am I being naive, or, or, you know, it just seems like there's a lot of high-income people here, so I just, it just seems low. Am I wrong?
There's, there's a few high-income people, but there's also people that don't have high incomes. And you have to look at the average. That earlier chart I was showing, um, the first one, let me see if I can go back to that. Um, now I gotta figure out how to, how to change what I'm sharing. Maybe do, did it change now for you?
No.
No, it might even be easier, Phil, to just, uh, stop sharing and then reshare and, and select that.
Yeah, I'll do that. Um.
So maybe I could try and answer to Debbie's question, because it's certainly one I thought about.
Um, but, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, what, what Somerset has is, um, a rather strange distribution of incomes within it. Um, are considered, a very large share of our income tax revenue comes from a small number of people. Um, and we're talking, you know, a dozen at most, um, in that set. And when you've got a very small set, then any movement in that set causes instability in the whole, because they're contributing a lot to the tax revenue just as an individual. So that's where our wealth comes from, because there are such, such individuals. But when one moves out or shifts their income somehow, then you see a sudden drop. That's the volatility that is also apparent.
Yeah, and also, I would just, I, I agree with what Robin said, and I would just add, um, if, now can you see this graph with the green line?
Yes.
Yeah, so the average adjusted gross income in Somerset had peaked at four hundred and fifty thousand in twenty seventeen, according to this chart. Um, so that's the average income. I mean, there are households in Somerset that earn twenty million dollars probably. Um, but the, the average is only four, only four hundred and fifty thousand.
Is, is that by, um, households, or is that?
That's by households. Yeah, by households.
Uh, how, how can they do by household?
Um, cause you do a tax return for your, for your household. I mean, the, the married couple, right?
And I know, but do they, is that how they track it by household? Instead of taxpayer? That doesn't make sense to me, but anyway.
Yeah, they, they do. In fact, they've provided us with tables. Um, I don't know if we can share those tables. They're not, they don't mention anybody's names. But they do break it down by the number of households in each income category. So we can.
Okay, uh, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have, I have another question. I'm sorry, Debbie, did I interrupt you?
That's fine, I was just.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Phil.
So regarding this, this, uh, the whole issue of income and how much do, do households contribute? So given that earlier this year, there were, um, residents who wanted to contribute to our budget, which I'm sure is a very unusual situation for a municipality. But, but given that, and, and remember at the time, this is regard, this is for people that wanted to help, uh, fund uh, extending the pool season. So, and, and at the time, I had mentioned that we have no structure for to take, you know, contributions from, from citizens. But I'm wondering, Phil, and to the whole Budget Committee, is there any kind of structure, uh, that we could set up, such as some kind of enterprise fund? And, and maybe this is something that the new Revenue Committee could also look into. And, and, but I don't, but I don't really know if there's a motivation for taxpayers to pay more taxes to a fund to help fund services. I don't know, but, but, you know, I just wanted to raise that since it did come up this year.
Yeah, so I guess my first reaction is that would not be something so much for the Budget Committee as possibly for the Revenue Committee, and maybe Councilmember Kumar wants to speak to that, or, um, our town attorney may wanna speak to that. Um, I would, my, my own personal thinking is that that would be a fairly unreliable source of revenue over time with a lot of fluctuations. And if we're gonna fund ongoing expenditures, it might be safer to do that through a property tax, which wou- would be more stable. That's my initial thinking anyways.
Yeah, clearly it's unstable, uh, but I think it's worth having a provision. Uh, for example, people might wanna leave some money to Somerset in their wills, you know, or let's say they made a lot of money, and, you know. So it's worth setting up something. I agree with.
Yeah, yes, because, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, uh, the late Councilmember Alice Champlin did leave in her will twenty thousand dollars, right, right, Matt? Was it twenty thousand? So, so we have to figure out where that's, you know, we have no uh, policy on where to put that money. So I'm glad you brought that up, John, because it's timely.
I think.
I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you all want me to just start going on the spending spree.
We, we need, we need a gift account that would do it. Uh, it's just a question of how we set that up.
Okay, thank you. A great discussion, and, and I think Phil's correct that, uh, a good portion of this latest part of discussion really bears on the new Revenue Committee. We're, we're, uh, we're behind schedule on our agenda. Uh, so I'd like to wrap up the discussion on Budget Committee. I was glad to let it go a little long, because I thought it was a great discussion we were having. Um, and at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, I, I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, but we, we introduced the proposal from the Budget Committee Chair to um, to handle ARPA funds as part of our regular budgeting process in a distinct line item.
Well, I think that what our process is, that if at least three of you agree, then Ron will draft it, and then we'll put it on the agenda in January.
So do we have, uh, does anybody agree second that motion, and so, and then we can take a vote on it?
Yeah, I, perhaps we get a moment's discussion, cause I, I agree this is the way to do it. But because there are conditions on this grant, we all have to be aware that there are these conditions. I mean, the one, we know about them. Uh, we've got to have the funds committed by the, you know, end of December twenty twenty-four. Um, we cannot put these funds into rainy day funds or other, um, reserve funds. We cannot use these funds for uh, debt reduction. Those, those conditions need to be known, at least, with it.
Steve and, and Ron, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I think we may need to phrase it um, more clearly and precisely in the motion that's, that's drafted.
That'd be great.
Exactly. I think more in the sense that we have a clear sort of paper trail of our decisions on, on ARPA. I think it would be good to, to have that maybe drafted, so. Maybe we can do something via email in the lead-up to the Jan meeting. So we all can eyeball it. Because you will introduce it, right, at the Jan meeting, Steve? That's what you're thinking?
Being introduced in, in concept tonight.
In, being introduced in concept, okay, fair enough. Sounds good. Yeah, sounds good. I'm in support. I'm in support.
Okay, Shannon? Are, are you okay with this?
Uh, sure.
Okay, and Debbie?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you all. So I think that's unanimous that we want to proceed. We, we can work on tweaking the language for an actual vote, um, in January.
The, uh, the adoption.
Well, it's an introduction. Remember, it's.
We introduced today.
Unless you're do, are you? Well, what does the town attorney suggest? If, are you suggesting?
So, yeah.
An emergency in December, I mean, in January, introduce it today. You don't, you don't have any language to introduce today, but what do you suggest, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yeah, normally I say we can't introduce resolutions or ordinances unless we've had them written up already and they're in front of us. But given the nature of this, that it does not involve legislation, you know, it's more administrative in nature. I think it's okay to introduce in concept tonight and then adopt the formal language at the January meeting. And I've taken some notes as to, you know, what folks have said should be in it, and, you know, that can be circulated before the January meeting for, you know, a, any tweaks.
Perfect.
Excellent.
If, before we, before we leave this issue, um, we probably should separately develop review criteria for a consideration of requests for use of these funds, because I'm being a liaison to several committees, I know that requests for these funds are being prepared by these committees.
That's.
Quick clarification, Steve and Robin on that. Um, if we, if this is part of our budget process, this is a grant, it's part of our budget process, would we apply the same sort of decisioning process we apply for any other proposal? Um, for these proposals.
The, the issue, the issue is that um, this is special. In other words, um, this is a grant.
It is special. It is special.
Yeah, right, so.
And the decisioning criteria, would we use a different decisioning criteria? Because it's expenditure.
I think we need different criteria, because one of the, the things is that it's only one-year money, if you will. So anything with a tail is not something we want to support, so we need to express that in review criteria, is what it boils down to.
Could, that, that makes sense. Could, could the Budget Committee propose a framework that has sort of a checklist for us, based on the Treasury guidance and other factors? How, how do we develop that criteria? Would it come from the Budget Committee? Ron, you wanted to say something?
Well, I, I was gonna say, I, I don't think it has to be unduly complicated. You, it, it might be sufficient to say, I was gonna write, you know, in this resolution, similar to what Councilmember Barr said. You know, whereas, you know, the funds are restricted pursuant to the ARPA rules, including that, you know, they can't be used to reduce debt, they, and expenditures must fall within one of the four eligible use categories, which are. And then if you wanted to adopt separate procedures for reviewing requests, you, you could do so. The town of Chevy Chase did so, for example, and I think I sent you, you know, their rules. But again, you know, it doesn't have to be that complicated, because, you know, basically, the Treasury guidelines provide here your four eligible use categories.
Well, well, wait a minute.
The council receives.
Wait a minute. So, so is what this uh, proposal, is it gonna do, it's gonna glob this money onto the, the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget? Right? So doesn't that mean that if it's put into this year's budget, the only way it can be spent this year is from proposals, you know, items that the council has to approve?
Correct, yes.
So it's, it's not, so this is why I wanted to, this puts the checks and balances on the money. But remember, this is, this is just like adding a bu, this is like adding a budget line. And then it's gonna be like a free-for-all, because when you, because when proposals come forward, you're gonna have to decide, well, because it's all glob together. It's not, it's not as if a proposal comes forward, it's all.
That's why it is a good idea to develop review criteria in advance to avoid it being a free-for-all.
Well, it, there are.
And maybe to decide upfront, how much is going to revenue reimbursement, and how much is left over for other uses?
But that's a, that's the decision the council needs.
I think, I think, uh, if I may, I think Robin, Robin, if I may, I think what you're saying is that in addition to the sort of high-level Treasury guidance, Ron, I think that, uh, Robin is sort of saying, look, we also need to keep in mind, and I think this was in the Budget Committee sort of, uh, talking points or recommendation, that we may wanna prioritize those projects that don't have recurring expenditures attached to it. We may wanna sort of have this additional set of, uh, guidance around this. And so it sounds like we may need some procedural, a, a, a separate, you know, very simple, to your point, Ron, but still, we may need to document some bulleted procedure.
But does that have to be decided? That might be way too much to decide immediately.
Yeah, we don't need to decide it today, but there's a, there's a part two here.
I, I'm not sure that the council is prepared to make all those major decisions by January to put into that. I mean, maybe the resolution should just be general, that it's, it's an extra line item, and the money can only be spent according to the guidelines, and then later on.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. The, the resolution should be general, but we mean.
No, we don't.
Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, maybe I'm stating, stating the obvious, but, um, you know, one, one difference here is oftentimes the the process would be, we identify a project or a need, and then apply for a grant and get money that would apply to that, whereas this is the opposite, where we've preemptively been sent money and now have to decide what, how we, how we use those funds.
Yeah, but we, what we are saying is, the first decision we are making is this is gonna be part of our budget decisioning. Okay, that's what Mayor Slaven just pointed out. We need a very simple sort of vote on that. I think then Councilmember Barr is additionally saying, yes, even as part of our budget decisioning, we may need to look at some additional constraining criteria, because of the nature of the money. And so we may need some procedural elements to it. Uh, I think Phil was trying to get in, by the way.
Because it's happening in this bu, because it's happening in this budget year, and what Phil is talking about is the planning for the next budget.
No, actually, Mayor Slaven, I, I, one point I wanna clarify is yes, we're receiving a portion of the ARPA money in fiscal year twenty-two, this fiscal year. However, the guidelines don't require us to spend it in this fiscal year. We are allowed to hold that in an account somewhere and put it into our budget for fiscal year twenty-three. There's no requirement that it be spent before the end of June next year.
Right.
So we can hold that money for now. We're not violating any Treasury guidelines by doing that. By temporarily, if you want, holding it in reserve. Um, we're allowed to do that on a temporary basis. As, as Councilmember Barr said, it has to be committed by the end of December twenty-four and spent by the end of December twenty-six.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of time.
I, I totally understand that, but all I'm saying is that, is that I want to make it clear that, that you are adding the money to this year's budget, not the future budget.
Yeah, I mean, accounting-wise, yes.
Right, and so, but so it means that, that the council can appropriate the money during this budget year.
Or it can leave it in reserves for this fiscal.
I understand, but I'm just saying that they will be able to decide if they wanna spend it in this budget year.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's why you're adding it to the.
Yeah.
That's why I want, that's why, that's why I think at some point to have all these guidelines, so everybody understands what the rules are before all these proposals come up.
I also wanna say that I agree with, with the town. I also want to say that I agree with with the town attorney, that we don't need to make this overly complicated. The guidelines allow us, if we want, to use that money to cover a revenue shortfall. Our revenue shortfall is going to exceed by a multiple the ARPA grant. That's my expectation.
Projected, projected.
Projected, yes.
Any more cheery news, Phil?
What's that?
Any more cheery news?
Um, so, so my 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 point is that I think the optimal way to to deal with this money is included in our budget that for the council to decide how to spend that, just as it would for any other money that we have, recognizing its one time nature, we have to look at the five year plan and decide can we afford to make spending now that may not be funded in future years unless we raise property taxes? It it has to look at everything together, it should be part of the overall budget. We can account on the side to treasury how we've spent that money, covering the revenue shortfall, paying for infrastructure, doing X, Y, or Z that met their guidelines.
I don't know if this is silly or not, but why wouldn't we take this money and put it into to cover the shortfall?
We can do that, yeah.
Less likely we will.
Yeah. Well, and and that was, that was my my point, if if you wanted to really simplify things, you know, that policy decision could be made sooner rather than later. Because it it is possible, from what I've seen in other places, that in the requests will start coming and then you'll have to decide do we want to be in the business of of receiving and reviewing all these multiple requests that we really don't have the staff or expertise to handle? And you know, it can be.
But Ron, either way, we would need to be part of the budget process, right?
Yeah, I caution us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I caution us about actually using the funds to make up for the revenue shortfall because they'll run out. And uh, if our revenue is still short, we're just postponing the trouble. Um, what we need to think about is ways to solve our revenue shortfall at the same time as we're using this money, that's that's important.
I I see three uh stages here, folks, I think we we are agreeing that this is part of our budget process, that's what we'll adopt um as a decision, if I'm understanding, Steve, in Jan. I think there's a second element here, which is, do we need uh sort of some new additional procedural guidelines on this, and Robin has flagged a couple, maybe we discuss those at the next work session to finalize those. And then there is the third element, which is that once we do that, we may ultimately still all agree that this is gonna cover budget shortfall, or we may not, we may need to debate it out. And that will need to happen as part of our budget decisioning process. Agreed? Am I, okay?
Okay, um, thank you all very much, if nobody else has anything further to say on the matter, I'd like to move on to amendments to the PNRC charter. And I believe this is something that Robin, you can tee up for us.
Uh, there's not really a lot to say, uh, you have the the amendments shown um there. One thing I was uncertain of was who who did the edits to the charter, do we know the answer to that?
Ron, right?
I I believe that the committee did.
Okay, you you don't know yourself, all right.
Well, okay, I don't know who in the committee, but the committee is.
All right, the committee did it, all right, okay. Anyway, the the changes are pretty straightforward, um, in the establishment of the committee, um what it does is give them a more concrete mission. Whereas previously, they were doing, reviewing existing data and policies and making recommendations, it now says that they are going to educate and product, protect, preserve, and beautify the park's natural resources of the town, so it gives them a more direct um statement of their goals. The duties that are listed here are different, and there are a couple of things that are new in here, so look careful, if you, I hope you've managed to look at them. Um, one of the things that's different is provide budget recommendations for a kid appropriate nature park as part of their charter. And that's kind of a one off thing, I don't know if it belongs in a charter, but I'm just bringing it up. They are also supposed to, as part of this, coordinate with the Stormwater Committee, which is fine. Except the Stormwater Committee's tenure is ending, so should that be part of the charter or not too, so those are the questions I would raise about it. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you, Robin, my initial thought is that those are great observations. But if this is what the PNRC feels will help guide them in the near term, I'm happy to do it, but I think you're correct, the charter would need to be revised again in a year or two when the Stormwater Committee no longer exists. When they've already provided the budget recommendations for the kid appropriate park, this would have to be updated. Um, yeah.
Sure, as long as we understand that, then I'm I'm okay.
Yep, uh, Kabir, do you have any questions, comments?
And my views are consistent with yours, Steve.
Okay, um. Uh, Shannon? Questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I couldn't find them unmuted, no, I have no questions.
Okay, Debbie?
I just think that 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 one about number eight, provide, you know, the recommendation for a kid appropriate nature park doesn't belong in in a charter, so that sounds like a work item instead, you know, but I'll go with it if it everyone else thinks it's okay. Okay, I know it's not that important, sorry.
I think we all share your um your feelings, Debbie, and that that Robin brought up, it's really not necessary or appropriate for the charter, maybe we can recommend to the PNRC they remove, remove number eight, it's it's a fine task, but remove it as a ongoing duty.
But but you will be, but it's up to you to decide whether you.
It's our call, not PNRC's. Yes, your decision. How about I move adoption of the charter as provided with deletion of number eight provide budget recommendations for kid appropriate nature park? And it with the understanding that there's nothing wrong with them developing that recommendation, it just doesn't belong in the charter.
Except this, this needs to be put on on a council agenda.
Okay, well, I I can, I mean, there's also gonna be a PNRC meeting on the twenty second, so I can tell I'm not gonna modify it as a.
Perfect, and then we'll bring it, bring it to the meeting in January.
All right.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Clarify rules for decks, balconies, and setback encroachments. Um, I hope this is more for our um town attorney, Ron, just just to walk us through the proposed.
Sure, ha- happy to do so, so the intent of this ordinance would be to simplify the rules governing exceptions for projections. So our building code imposes setbacks from the front side and rear lot lines on buildings. And then says certain projections, like bay windows, decks, porches, and the like, are allowed to project a certain distance into the setbacks. That provides flexibility for applicants and is aimed at promoting design elements that break up the apparent massive structures, however, as we've experienced several times, it's sometimes difficult to apply the ordinary meaning of decks, terraces, stoops, et cetera, to contemporary construction. And so an option would be just to eliminate the exceptions and apply the setbacks to the buildings without you know, getting into the arguments as to whether something is a deck or a porch or a stoop or a bay window or the like. That's the approach that's been taken by some other jurisdictions nearby, Chevy Chase Village and section three of the village, I believe. So this this ordinance would delete the the different rules for different types of projections and and basically say your cornices and eaves, the the part of the roof can project two and a half feet into setbacks, so that that's common, because when we measure setbacks, we measure them to the wall to the walls of buildings, and then if there's a, you know, a roof overhang, we're not gonna be worried about that as long as it's not, you know, more than two and a half feet, but then other than that, we're not gonna get into measuring setbacks for different types of of projections. So that's that's what would be proposed in the the draft that's before you tonight, happy to answer.
If I could just add on, um, just really quickly, um, uh th- this discussion, we'd sort of narrowed it down to taking this approach at the the previous council work session, but I think there were still um a couple of unanswered questions. Uh, one was whether the council wanted to consider, for example, rear setbacks only, oh, uh, whereas this uh eliminates uh setback exemptions on all four sides. Um I I actually, that that might have been, I think, the only question that was raised, um, but that was sort of why it went back to have a further substantive discussion on um if there were any exceptions that didn't want to allow.
Right, thank you, Matt, yeah, so one option could be to preserve exceptions in the rear yard, so you could say, for example, a deck may project nine feet into the required rear setback only, not the side or the front, just the rear.
That's it. So uh, thanks for that question, Matt, my recollection is that the council discussed that briefly. I can't remember which council member raised the point, but the point was maybe. Yeah, that some people, I mean, people's backyards, but into other people's backs and side yards and we just thought to be to simplify it, we would not not universally allow exemptions in any direction. My understanding is that owners or applicants could request variances, but then they'd be requesting that variance and we would have to consider it on a case by case basis, they would have no automatic exemptions. Um let's let's go around, if anybody has any questions or comments on this this fresh approach here. Kabir?
Um, yeah, I was just trying to think through the impact of this, um, so and I think you you mentioned one, which is that we will now get variance applications for these pro- projected elements. Uh, decks, balconies, et cetera, right, if people want to build those, they are often part of uh projects. And so it's likely that we will get those now as various applications moving forward, I suspect, so that's one impact. Any, I guess the question to the group is, does anyone foresee any other impacts of this um in terms of what is likely to happen in terms of the building permit process and what applications we will get and what will be the expectations from the council? I don't have a clear sense, but it'd be great to see if does have a view, and Ron, if you have a view.
Sure, yeah, so, I mean, one possible unintended consequence could be that buildings would be more square and rectangular in design if developers were aiming to maximize the buildable envelope and weren't afforded additional exceptions for projections. However, I understand that has not been an issue in Chevy Chase Village in section three.
But you you're saying, oh, go ahead, Matt.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna add it, I was gonna add something else, so I didn't want to interrupt the flow.
Yeah, if I can quickly clarify, so Ron, I think you're saying that if people did not seek variances, they wanted to stay within code, they might build structures that sort of maximize the allowable buildable space. And and right, and then it you might end up with designs that don't have any projections, protrusions, and it look has a kind of uniform look.
Correct, yeah.
But if they wanted it, they would need to seek variances, and and that's probably what has happened in the other jurisdiction, I suspect.
Um, or or, you know, if you want a front porch, that just means you gotta move the house back a little bit.
So it has reduced the actual footprint of a house, right?
Right.
Interesting.
And that that was, that was gonna be my my point is that you you are by definition shrinking the allowable building area on on a lot. You know, without seeking a variance. For better or for worse, I don't, I'm not, you know, not making a judgment.
Go go ahead, Shannon.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, I was just wondering, is there a way that on we could limit it to like nothing on you know, above like the ground floor, like, so like no one really want, like, for the front of the house, like, no one really wants a balcony, like, hanging off the front of a house. Um, can we put that, it's like our stipulation, like, you can't have a deck at the front of your house, you can't have a balcony at the front, because it's all in the second story, but you could, you know, potentially have a front porch.
Except, yeah, I mean, that that's possible, the the rules could say you know, a front porch, which is a a covered platform at the entry, at the first floor entry of a house, you know, that you could afford an exception for that. But not afford an exception for a balcony on the, you know, second story or third story.
Or a deck on the second story or third story or.
Right, yeah, except in the rear, you know, you you could say.
Yeah, like, I personally like that, because I think that front porches are actually like quite neighborly and, um, you know, are or, you know, it it encourages like people to sit out there if they want and like, you know, but I mean, a deck off of a front of a house is odd.
Can I say something? I am.
Yes, please.
I don't know why it's bad to, for people to have to follow the rules, we have rules. And if you want to have a bigger something, then you maybe have to move your house back, maybe you have to build on less of the space. I think, you know, what we have going on in this neighborhood is that people build on every inch of this of their lot and then they want a variance to build some more, and it's inappropriate. You know, you can build, everybody can have a front porch. You know, you just have to build it within what the rules are. I I would love to see see something that simplifies that we have to do. I don't want to be making a decision that this one can have a porch and that one can't. It's 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 not right. I think we should file, we have rules, we have a code, if our code isn't good enough, then change it. That's what I say. You know, maybe that's what the project has to be, to look at our code. But simplify our process and say, yeah, you gotta, you gotta build in the code, sorry. Anyway, sorry.
I mean, I I I agree, but my only fear, I mean, if you look at the history of like what's going on right now, it's all developers and like, they will, they don't they're not gonna make a, they're not gonna cut square footage of their house to have like a front porch and, you know, to Ron's point, it can.
They can't have one.
Well, right, but I mean, we could end up getting like this aesthetic of, you know, this big box square.
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that, because I don't think a developer will build anything that isn't aesthetically nice that they can sell. And I think if you walk around the neighborhood, there are a lot of front porches, I got one right in front of my house, please come visit anytime, guys. But I built it within whatever the rules were. You know, so let's stick by our rules or or fix our rules. You know, that's where I stand.
Well, I I I mean, I think the issue, I mean, what we're saying is we're gonna change the default. That's that's what it boils down to, and so that we're no longer allowing all these elements by default. Um, they can come in um and request them. And so what Shannon's saying is really front porches are different. Uh, in other words, that they add community value um in ways that decks in your front or your back don't. Um, uh, and bay windows don't, but front front porches do add community value. And so maybe we should allow that one as the default thing that we do allow a projection for front porch, but for nothing else, because it adds community value, that would be the logic.
Right, and and to clarify or respond to uh Debbie, y- your point about following the rules. I I have to double check, but I believe our current building code provides an automatic exemption for front porches, so it's really a question of as we what I'm hearing from Shannon and perhaps from Robin is as we look to simplify our building code and eliminate a number of these automatic exemptions. We we might want to keep the automatic exemption for front porches.
Okay, I I would, my my only um again, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not in favor or or against either of these, but just to help. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not in favor or or against either of these, but just to help. You think about how you want to go forward with it. I think the risk of allowing this exemption is like what we've seen. It is sometimes difficult to determine without a very strict definition of, is that a porch or is it a deck in the front? You know, if they, if if it's a little bit raised off the ground, is it automatic, is it, does it have to be at ground level? Um, but what if it has a little bit of an overhang, you know, on because their, their front, their front, uh, their front lawn is pitched? Or I'm, I'm just trying to think of examples off the top of my head, but I think that's where we get and where where it's been trouble. In previous instances of, you know, what's balcony versus a deck and or and so then we we keep having to narrow and narrow the the definition to to make sure that people are building what we're imagining instead of making it simple, which was, I think, the point of the original proposal.
I agree, Steve. I I really appreciate Matt's point there. And I think, you know, part of what we're gonna see are just more modern, what are called modern designs. And and we're gonna struggle with uh applying these definitions strictly. We all kind of have a vision of the front porch, but that might not be what we might end up seeing. And so I'm, if we are to move forward with this, I think sort of the more elegant, universal default might be, you know, more sensible approach. And then in those variance hearings, we try and sort out. Uh, because we, I feel we have more flexibility there to think through. And so, yeah, you know, so if I was to summarize the impact, I think we are saying we will probably see more variances for projections. Uh, or if people stick with the code, the new code, the updated code, then we might see smaller buildable space being used. We might see shrinking forms because people want to have those denied design elements or they want to maximize the space without seeking variances. They will have to make it work in the buildable space. That's the two impact statements. And those are, I think, things we can, to me at least, it feels like we can, we can deal with that. And those are good outcomes potentially for our town.
Okay, um, thank you, Kabir. Uh, I, I think this has been a great discussion of thoughtful comments, pros and cons. I think it sounds like we're all generally aligned on uh changing our code, simplifying it and removing exemptions. It just might be a question of how far do we simplify it? We do not need to decide that tonight. Um, we can continue that discussion as we actually look at the proposed language and vote on it uh in January, I believe. So, um, thank you. Unless anybody else has a follow up comment, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item.
I'm sorry to hang us up, Steve. I just, for my notes, wanted to clarify. So is the point that you you'd like this to be introduced in January as is, but allow time for discussion if we wanted to carve out other exemptions or?
Yep, we've already introduced it.
We've already introduced it, so the clock has started.
The clock has started. So, so don't you want to, don't you want to vote it on?
Right, so we would, we would vote on it, but but we could consider amendments when we vote on it, I believe.
Okay, right, and 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 I would, I do suggest that somebody write an article for the journal.
I I already have, it's, it's a short article, but.
Oh, right, oh, that's the one. Are you good, will you, that's one that you sent the draft of, right? So then you might want to, you might want to add to that, that it's gonna be considered at the next council meeting.
Okay. Let's see.
And I'll make sure it's, uh, when, when, when I, when I read it, when we.
That'd be perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll make sure it is. I'll make sure it's.
Okay.
And, yeah, I, I already sent notice to the county council to start their 30 day review. So we are ready in January if if the council wants.
Great, thank you, Ron. Next agenda item is ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And.
So, yeah, I I can take that on as well.
Thank you.
So at the last work session, we discussed preparing a draft ordinance that would regulate accessory dwelling units. You know, that's most often a second dwelling on a lot, a rental unit it could be. Formerly, it was known as accessory apartment. It can be inside the main building or it can be located in a detached structure such as a garage. It could be the entirety of the detached structure or it could be an apartment within the detached structure, so like an apartment on the second floor of a garage. So basically, this ordinance would apply the same setbacks that apply currently to an accessory structure like a detached garage or shed to a detached accessory dwelling unit. And then it would provide that before we issue final inspection of the construction of an ADU, we make sure the folks have their landlord license from the county. And that they're gonna be providing at least one onsite parking space for the accessory dwelling unit. But don't have to do so if there are already at least three spaces on the lot, which can include space inside a garage or on the driveway. And that's the summary.
Thank you very much. Wait, has questions or comments for Ron? Uh, start with Debbie this time.
Um, no questions. I think it's a, I think it'll, I read it and I thought it sounded, I thought it was good.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Um, Robin, for some reason you show up on my screen, so what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm sorry about that. Um, but in any, in any case, no, I think, I think it does, does reflect what our intent was at our last meeting. And so I I'm supportive.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kabir?
No questions.
Shannon?
No questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. Good, so we're set to consider it, to vote on it in January.
Steve, uh, no question, but I don't know if Matt wants to add anything to this, any?
Oh, thank you.
From, from his experience in the town.
Well, I I think the only, the only point, and this is maybe half, half a question for Ron to see if he would potentially see this, but one potential impact I could see from it that is perhaps counter to some, some goals that the town has sought is that if we require additional parking on some lots, that does raise the possibility of otherwise increasing impervious surfaces on on lots, which, as we know, does affect um runoff.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good point, and it certainly could be a consequence. Yes, some communities like Martin's additions, and I think the town of Chevy Chase, for example, have non-vegetative front yard surface coverage requirements to help balance that. And, you know, maybe send some of the parking to the side or rear yard.
Well, I think that in the, in the interest of time, that's something that can be um considered as an amendment when it's voted on.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I could, so this is the this is the first time that um the council's seen the language, I believe. So we, we'd have to send it on to the county council, and there's not 30 days between now and the January meeting. So we'd have to act on it at the February meeting.
Yeah. Ron, this is just a technical question. I mean, if does our store, the stormwater language that we just approved, does that apply to this kind of structure or do we have to write it in directly to this kind of structure? In other words, it requires, you know, pervious pavers or gravel pathways or whatever, permeable spaces. And is that going to be built in or or not?
Currently, that's only for new construction though, right? The, uh, our first.
Oh, yes, but, yeah, so it really, I mean, and I think the Stormwater Committee is moving on to considering, you know, renovations and things. And so I think, I even told them about ADUs, so hopefully we'll see that come in. I think that might, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Great discussion. Agenda number six, tree removal. For salts. Can I? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Th- this ordinance attempts to implement the recommendations that were discussed at the last work session from the PNRC with respect to tree removals. It, you know, cleans up some of the language, you know, instead of referring to landscape plan or reforestation plan, it's a replanting plan. And we're clarifying that when that plan is submitted in connection with a project that involves tree removals, the replanting plan should specify the schedule for completion of planting the the new trees to go in. And that in addition, when someone requests a tree removal, we're adding a factor for the council's consideration, and that's what trees have been removed from the property within the prior five year period. So that will help, you know, mitigate the risk of, you know, people phasing their requests, you know, and requesting to remove one tree a year, for example. And then is specifying when the decision is made on whether to grant a request, you know, the council or mayor, as the case may be, you know, determining on who is, who is ruling on the request. And the mayor can review requests for one or two trees. The council reviews requests for three or more trees. The replanting plan can be taken into consideration as, you know, a mitigating factor to possibly grant an application. And then if there is to be replanting, clarifying that performance bonds need to be posted and that the plantings have have to actually happen according to the approved schedule, the replanting schedule, and that there would be a warranty period so that when these reforestation trees are planted, the applicant will warrant them for two years. And if a tree dies within that two year warranty period, it's got to be replanted. And then the warranty period starts over again for that tree. And that's the summary.
Thank you very much. Let's just go in reverse order, as I can recall, for questions and comments. Shannon?
No questions.
Okay, um, Debbie?
No questions.
Kabir?
None from me either.
Robin?
Oh, yeah, guess what? I do have a comment. Um, I actually, I'd gone over this with Ron, so he knows it's coming. On the very last one, the 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 distinction between the one or two trees, which the mayor does, and the three trees, which the council does, PNRC is trying to get away from number counts of trees. And so I shared that with Kristen Kana to get her reaction, and I did actually offer an alternative to Kristen, which is slightly more complicated, but not very much more complicated, but it it is along the lines of if the sum of the tree diameter is measured at four feet is 30 inches or less, then the mayor reviews it. If it's greater than 30 inches, then council refuses it. And what that does is you can have any number of small trees that the mayor reviews, but if it's a big, big tree, the council has to review it. That's the effect of that. It's, I would, the amendment, that's gonna go for discussion at the December 22nd meeting. And if the, if the committee approves something along those lines, I'll ask for that amendment at the January meeting. It's a small amendment, in fact.
Perfect, thank you very much. I kind of like that. That's clever. Okay, um, hearing no other comments or questions. Uh, let's move on to the other business. We're more or less on schedule. Pickleball, agenda item seven. I think it was the town manager to have.
Sure, yeah, I I can, I can jump in on that one. So I I attached a document with a couple of, couple of pages that sort of summarized where we are in terms of uh discussing that as, as you all. I I believe you've all seen that there was discussion about this on at least one of the, the, the local listservs. And there's been sort of an ad hoc volunteer working group that's been formed of of some residents that are particularly interested in in seeing this through. And uh, they've identified the basketball court on Capella Park there as the most suitable place to put a pickleball court. And a cup, a couple of, couple of points there. One is that I think within the next three years or so, the town should probably put in its five year budget or consider putting in its five year budget redoing that surface anyway, regardless of what, what its use is, whether it stays basketball, pickleball, or um dodgeball, whatever. Separate from that, uh, these folks are hoping that the council would consider phasing in pickleball onto that court. And so phase one is a a smaller investment in three uh, three, the equipment necessary for essentially three pickleball courts using modular equipment, so nets that are movable, lines that are not permanent, um, to get a better sense of not just the interest in town, but actually how people would use them, how many people would actually use them as opposed to um theoretical interest. I, the page two of the the document I sent over gives a, a, an estimate for about how much we would um, need to budget for that. That's not included in the budget that is passed for this fiscal year. Um, so we would need to take that out of contingency money or amend the budget in order to use those funds for uh the implementation of the the phased plan that um these residents are are requesting, which would be to start using that court for pickleball starting in March. I also included the, the, some of the equipment there specifically. I think one of, one of the things that the council would also have to consider not outside of monetary considerations would be the use of that basketball court. I think in order to properly set up the pickleball, it would require at least one, if not both of the basketball hoops to be removed there. I think that the, 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 the folks that are interested in pickleball have suggested that um, we could advertise that the, the basketball courts and hoops at the elementary school could be used in lieu of the the publicly available uh court there at Capella Park. So I think that the three, the three court proposal would require really both nets, both hoops being taken out. I think they were willing to also uh concede perhaps leaving one of the hoops in as kind of a, a basically to the three point line and only using a third of the court. So it's still available for games of horse or knockout or something, but not a full court basketball game. Um, and putting in two of the pickleball setups there, which would, um, you know, effectively reduce the cost of the proposal by one third. So that's, that's kind of high level where we are. I try to answer some of your questions about any of the discussions that have been taking place. If if you have any for me.
Thank you, Matt. I have a question for Ron. What, what is the status of that parkland? I mean, does the town? I mean, does the town have the full right to unilaterally remove the basketball court and install the pickleball courts?
Yes, I believe so. And I'm looking for my notes now because I looked at that issue a while back. Let me see. And yes, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall my conclusion was unlike other parks, another property that the town owns, the code does not impose any limits, so the town could do with the basketball court what it wishes.
There's a lot of legend, there's a lot of legend that contradicts that, but you did do the research, I would say about a year ago, that indicated that the council has full power to make decisions over the use of that land.
Yeah, I believe, Ron, that you had looked into the land records there as well and looked into the what was still available from the town's initial purpose of it and weren't able to find anything that indicated it was earmarked for certain or specific uses.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Yeah, no restrictions.
One thing, I think that Matt gave an excellent report, and he's done a lot of work on this with Bruce Charandoff and some others. But I want to make it clear that what the group is proposing is a pilot. I know our president loves that term. It's a pilot to begin in March, and it's just requested that the council approve the pilot and some limited funds to be able to set it up. Then I think that the council was really interested before they appropriate more funds for this to set up like a real pickleball court, that this will give the council the opportunity to better understand if there is sustained interest in this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for highlighting this as proposals for a pilot, a phased pilot.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Robin, any questions, comments?
No, I mean, the only time I've seen people playing basketball on that court is exactly with one hoop that I've never seen a football basketball game on that court, in fact.
Thank you. Kabir?
I'm in support of this. I think in general, we should try and make it easier for people to stay active and healthy in town and pickleball. I just was flipping through the channels the other day, and there seems to be even a tour now for pickleball. So it's kind of cool that we can bring something new. And I think that last time, Matt, you had mentioned that you were going to look at the usage data. I think we all share Robyn's observation. Unlike Robyn, I'm not frequently walking by that court, so I don't have conclusive data, but you know, I think we all share the view that it's not frequently used, but I think you were going to kind of try and gather some data points on that. If you have them, that would be helpful, just so that we are grounded and and not just observed.
Yeah, I can get more specific numbers for you. I would say that Robyn's observation is right, though. This year was a little weird because the Camp Somerset did use that entire space. I think in terms of actual use, it isn't a lot. I think it would be, I in my head, the bigger bugaboo would be perception of removing a publicly available basketball court in to put in place a less accessible private court for Somerset only.
I think it would be good for Matt to inquire of the neighbor, you know, there's several very active residents that live on that part of Cumberland, and why not ask Matt to send an email to all of them and say, what is your observation? But it's all anecdotal because
I mean, I will say
You're right. There's somebody right there.
Um, it's actually used more than you think that it might be. I'm having, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Okay, I'm having like some computer technical issue.
We can hear you.
There are people on it quite a bit, and you know, I don't know, like Matt, if you had said that you would have to remove both of the baskets or just one of the basket in order to put down pickleball. Is it both or one?
Well, so in order to put down three, both would need to be taken out. In part, just because people's momentum, you know, might take them to the side and you just hate for somebody to run into a pole there. I think one of kind of a compromise that we had discussed would be to do two pickleball courts and still leave effectively a third of the basketball court. So you know, and then I think I told Bruce that that seems familiar to me, you know, when I would play pickup basketball, you grab the rebound, and then you have to dribble outside the three-point line again, and now all of a sudden you're on offense. So it's, I mean, I agree, Shannon, that especially, I think, after school and in the kind of twilight hours of the evening, it's definitely used, but I also agree with Robyn's point that you I think I can count really one time that I specifically remember seeing a five-on-five full-court basketball game going on there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And but there are people on it quite a bit, you know, in various forms, like there's a boot camp that works out there, and they do stuff in the mornings, and there's different stuff like that. And I will say that the thing and the challenge with the Somerset basketball court is that with the bar T after-school program, you really can't use, you can't go to that playground and you can't use the basketball courts until after they're gone, which is around 5:00, 5:30 or something like that. So it would be taken out for the school year for the majority of the day. I will say that from my active vocal neighbors, there is a large concern, you know, about parking, as always, on Little Cumberland. And where would people park for this pickleball? And you know, I guess apparently they don't think that the basketball parking is an issue, but the pickleball parking would be more of an issue. And then the second thing would be the noise that's associated with pickleball, and it is a louder bang or pong or pang or whatever it might be that would affect, you know, not a ton of houses, but it certainly would affect some houses that are directly in there across the street from them. And so that's kind of been a concern of people, too. So those are my thoughts.
May I quickly address the noise, please? Shannon, I was thinking that so my in-laws were telling me about this. They live on the Gulf Coast, and and the noise was also a concern in their neighborhood, and so they had to kind of find the right location for it. I think this might be one of the better locations we have, kind of, you know, basically about the Wisconsin Avenue. It's not that close to a lot of residences, just a handful. So it might be, it's not ideal. There will still be noise pollution. I think the town hall, frankly, might hear most of it. But it might be one of the better, yeah, might be one of the better.
Except if you live there and
Yeah, right, right across the street.
One of the, you know, people that it does affect. But, I mean, it's hard to say how much more noise would be there than a basketball bouncing anyway. You know, I don't really know the answer to that.
That's the beauty of the pilot. That's the beauty of the pilot.
Yes.
These are all, this is all the information. The purpose of the pilot is to gather these information. If you approve the pilot, and then you find out there's horrible parking problems, noise, and everything else, then you just, you end the pilot.
Yeah, it's also possible to put in a sound-absorbing screen if it turns out that that is a problem by itself. Tell people to use devices to move in cars.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
I don't think there's any downside to trying it.
I love the idea of a pilot. Okay, let's start there. But I'm wondering, who takes care of the equipment? I see there's things like squeegees and mops, and so who's in charge of the nets, you know? It's like these things have, maybe that will
Matt can answer that. Matt can answer that.
And we did discuss that a little bit. I think the the feeling was that the nets are bulky enough that there's a pretty minimal risk of those being stolen. But yeah, yeah, I mean, that was in part factored into the estimates for, you know, I put in brooms, squeegees, et cetera, and other miscellaneous costs with the feeling that we either would need to conceive of some way that you know, people have access to it. And that would be part of it, too, is if it is restricted only to Somerset residents, which would be easier than to have a sign out and have it under lock and key or whatever, that residents are able to access it. Or if it is, if it remains a publicly accessible court, it just shifts to pickleball instead of basketball, in which case you would leave that stuff, I guess, available for folks, and there probably is a risk of somebody swiping a squeegee.
Okay, so may I remind everyone, in the interest of time and trying to help our president, that the only decision tonight is whether you want to move forward with putting it, having it introduced, because these are all excellent questions that you're going to want to ask the committee, this ad hoc committee, how that's going to work. We, I don't, you know, we don't really know. I met with, you know, Matt and I met with Bruce, and when, and the idea is that this wouldn't start until March anyway. So tonight, the decision is whether you want to move it forward to be introduced at the next council meeting, and then when you actually make the decision, people, you know, the advocates will be there to answer these good questions.
That's a good point, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, one option, if the council were to approve of this proposal is to then say, you know, in consultation with the town staff or what have you, to develop that administrative plan for, you know, maintaining the pilot program.
By the way, Steve and Mayor Slavin, we cannot just approve it now in this work session? No? Okay.
Yeah, because it's fund expenditures, policies, all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
I also think this should only be for Somerset residents, just like the tennis courts. I don't see why we have to open this up, just because basketball was, you know, it isn't like we're replacing one or the other. We still have a basketball court. I love the idea of two courts and one basketball hoop. I think, you know, but anyway, we'll talk more, I guess.
Right, so we'll we can consider it at the January meeting and vote on it. I'm with Debbie that I'd like to see the pilot to have just two courts. For one thing, to get three courts in, the description says we have to resurface the court. We're not planning to resurface the court this fiscal year.
Well, wait a minute. We need to ask the town attorney. I don't think it can be voted on. I think something needs to be introduced.
In January. We would vote in January.
But not voted on.
Yeah. Oh, we can't introduce and vote on this in January?
Ask the town attorney. I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't know. There's a budget. You're going to have to transfer money, which I think you can do, correct?
Yeah, yeah. If the transfer is within the same budget categories, can be approved by majority vote. If it involves a supplemental appropriation, needs to be approved by supermajority vote. I don't think we need, you know, it's up to the council, but I don't think you need a formal resolution. You could just accept the approval by motion, and the minutes could reflect that action.
That's what I was thinking. It's just a pilot.
Okay, so we will put it on the agenda for a decision, and then they can put restrictions on things once questions are asked.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
As you may know, I need to jump on the Martin's Editions meeting at 7:30, so I'll depart shortly before then. Thank you.
We're making good time. Don't worry, Ron. Okay, next agenda item is very brief. There's a request from two of our committees to hold a town forum on January 18th on the history of slavery and segregation. And I think it's a great idea. I don't know if that's, and I was hoping we could talk about it tonight so that we can give a thumbs up to those committees that have such a plan for it.
I think all you have to do is get a buy-in by the council, because I don't think, as I said, I don't think it requires a council vote. So I think if every, just to try to save you time, I don't know that anybody would be opposed to it, but it, and it's going to be recorded, so if council members can't be there, they'll be able to watch it afterwards. So I don't, I know you want to move your agenda.
It's a great idea. Anybody disagree? Okay, there are no disagreements. We're moving ahead on that. Thank you. I'd like to shift the agenda items nine and 10. I think that there's been a lot of, or there's been some significant resident interest in the topic of emergency services. And I'd like to let us, give us a chance to talk about that here. Number 10. In particular, we're looking at ambulance services. I don't know. Jeffrey, were you going to give a little bit of background here? Who's going to tee this up?
Well, I'll just give, I'll just give a brief, maybe Councilor Revak wants to say something, but I'll just remind everyone that many months ago, you charged me and Matt to set up a oversight meeting with the fire chief slash department so that you could get answers to a lot of questions that have been raised. And I did want to say before I turn it over to Councilor Revak, who's worked very hard on this, that I did speak with Assistant Chief Richards today, and she said that the department is prepared to come and meet with the council in an open meeting so that all of your questions can be answered, because I think a lot, and we are very fortunate that our Public Safety Committee member, Kumar Vaswani, has provided so much excellent staffing on this. And so many of those questions need to be asked in public and answered by those in charge. So I will now turn it over to Councilor Revak to elaborate.
Um, no, I think that you really did a great job of explaining that, and I think that, you know, really what is to happen is, you know, we've been brought to light a lot of different issues that are going on there and some questions about whether or not the staffing is there or it's not. And so, you know, to be able to ask that in a public forum is going to be really helpful for all of us, so we can all gather, you know, kind of our thoughts on that. There is one. So we have a Bethesda Fire Department representative for the town of Somerset right now, and that is a position that she has held for a while, and I think there's some questions about about that particular role and how it is defined within our town code. And I don't know, Mr. Town Attorney, if we do have the Bethesda Fire Department representative's position specified in the town code at all. And if not, is that something that we should be doing?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any reference in the town code. I looked today after I saw the notes. And because the BFD is a nonprofit organization, I would think that the membership on its board is subject to that organization's rules. The membership on its board is subject to that organization's rules. The town of Somerset, however, can impose, you know, i- its own procedures for how we select an appointee. And the. The code and charter, the charter and code generally provide that. The mayor with the approval of the council makes appointments. Um, and we've been adopting SOPs. To set forth how those appointments should take place. So, you know, maybe we ought to expand those procedures to apply to outside organizations as well when we are appointing. You know, someone to represent the town on another. Uh, I'm sorry, on an outside organizations board. So right now, right now, I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I I.
Charter code, but.
I I I think just like with the lack of a policy on policing and the hiring of police. We have no, th- there's no um, rules or regulations for the appointee. And what we've done since I've been mayor. Be- because before I think the previous mayor just picked one of his friends to be on that board. And since I've been mayor. Uh, I've nominated someone that's been approved by the council, but there's no, there's no term limit. There's no accountability. There's no requirement that our rep reports back to the town. Or or anything. So I I think, you know, I'm, as part of my legacy, I want to put all these structures in place so that it's. Highly functional in the future. And I think that um. Councilmember Ravak's recommendations that we do pursue that are excellent.
Jeffrey, have you forwarded the concerns that were shared with the council to our board member um, for our review?
No. No.
I I I just to add though, that um. I I did make, so we have a one board member that. Quote unquote represents Somerset and then we have another. Board member who is a resident of Somerset.
But but that, but that person, Nat Finkelstein, he was elected by by that nonprofit board.
But uh, my only point was.
Coincidence.
That they they are both aware of um, not the most recent uh. Uh, concern that was that was brought to our attention, but um. But got, kind of got wind of. Uh, Kumar's initial memo that had laid out a lot of um, the potential issues and concerns.
Well.
Um, and have not yet. That responded.
Okay, well, I I understand all that, but as has been pointed out by a number of people, that the. We need to get our questions answered from from the. Fire chief of Bethesda Fire Department and the Fire Chief of Montgomery County. The the board members, they're they're. They're they're uh, have administrative, they don't have administrative duties and running the place. So. So we need, we're we're, we need to get information about these concerns from the people that are running it, not from the board members.
Mayor Slavin, uh, Councilmember Ravak, so what's the proposal in in front of us? What are we? To decide tonight or take action on tonight?
Well, it's not to ta- tonight, the question is whether you want to move forward with asking the town attorney to draft something. That would would um. A policy regarding the appointee. And if there's a job description or requirements for reporting back to the council or. I I I, you know.
For this particular external group or for all? External.
Well, well, we might, well, you know, we coincidentally, uh, former Councilman Ricondos is also. Uh, an appointee to the uh, Bethesda uh, transport, the. Friendship Heights Transportation Management District Advisory Committee. And we might, we we might want to at the same time have have uh, the same kind of um, requirements on that.
And Montgomery Municipal Cable.
That's right, and systems coordination.
Yes, correct, and correct.
Stormwater, uh, storage, solid base, sorry.
Uh, yeah, that, that's an excellent question. And yes, our our representative on Montgomery Municipal Cable Board is our town manager. And we don't, we don't have it, you know, for, and he's, aren't you the president now?
A vice president.
Yeah, so we're we're lucky there, but we don't, but 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 that's a, that's a a um, lifetime appointment. And so, yes, I think that's that, I think it would be a good idea to have some policies for all three of these appointments.
Let's do it.
If you all agree.
Yeah, some, I think we should have.
Well, and Pepco had asked us to to have a um, a a member of their.
Right, but that's not, that's just a new ad hoc committee.
Okay.
The Councilmember Barr is doing a beautiful job. So these are, these are nonprofit. And count and uh, county created boards that need.
So um, haven't heard from Debbie or Shannon. Do either of you have some comments or thoughts?
No, I like the idea of having a a code in place and how we put people on these um. On these boards. I think it makes sense.
Thank you, Debbie. Shannon?
Yeah, I agree. I think that um. You know, to have it more uh, official would be very helpful for all of us so we can. Get the information that is, you know, being relayed at these important meetings, like so that we can understand it as a town council and then share with our town as well.
Okay.
So so before you move on, regarding the the um. Oversight hearing with the Fire Chief's Department, when. Why don't you give us some dates that work for all of you so that we can, because I can call her tomorrow and and get it scheduled. Do you want to do it in January?
Fine with me.
Yep, sounds good.
So what, so what, can we pick several nights that? Work for everyone?
I'm basically clear any evening. Af- after five thirty.
But not January the eighteenth.
You're right, not January the eighteenth.
Well, of course, around then you'll have your work session.
January, January thirteenth will not work for me. And um. And there's a chance I'm out of town the week before.
What about Jan twentieth?
That's, isn't that a federal holiday? No, it's not. So so when are you, when would you like, maybe you should schedule the work session. For January two, Mr. President.
Right, so let's do that right now. The work session for January. Um, one. Do we like to on Thursday? Would it be Thursday the twentieth or Monday the seventeenth?
Well, Monday the seventeenth is a federal holiday.
Yeah, that's not a good choice.
We're gonna do the the um, the twentieth, and I I I need a five thirty time.
Okay, five thirty on the twentieth for next.
My only, my only comment is that that's the due date for my daughter-in-law's uh, second. Um, so I may or may not be here, so I can say.
Well, there.
We shake the heads up?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh.
You just have to set priorities, Robin.
So so, let me suggest, let me suggest that the, given that we will be having the um. Uh. Officials from the Fire Department, that maybe we should do this during the daytime, like a noon. Something noonish. Is there a day, I mean, what about, what about on on Tuesday, the eighteenth or the Wednesday, the nineteenth or Thursday, the twentieth at noon?
I can do it on the.
Well, I could do Thursday, the twentieth, but I cannot do the eighteenth or nineteenth. I'm out of town.
I can do the twentieth at lunchtime.
Okay, so let's let's say Thursday, the twentieth at lunchtime.
I have a quick thing, just maybe I can pick it up separately with you, Mayor Slavin, and maybe council members. It might be good to have other. Like the police chief and other services heads also. On a kind of regular basis.
Yeah.
Visit with the council.
We are, as I mentioned in, I'm glad you brought that up. As I mentioned in orientation, we are. Years overdue with having a meeting with the Second District Police Commander.
Yeah, I think that would be good to have, maybe, and we can even, I don't know how Shannon thinks about this, do it on a kind of regular rotation.
Definitely.
Bye.
Bye, Ron.
All right. Um. We actually still have five minutes left. We've pushed off the last item for quite a few work sessions, voting age. It's a pretty straightforward topic. Make sure, um, other towns have lowered the voting age for the town. That's tie um, to sixteen or local elections. I I know there's some. Uh, support for this among residents. I think it's a great idea. It can increase engagement by. Um. Just within the town, I think, I think it's all positive. Um. What what do folks think about lowering the voting age?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Um. I I actually think it's a terrible idea. I think, and if we really get to consider it, I'd like to send you an article or two on the teenage brain, okay? Because a sixteen-year-old that we let them drive is is ridiculous. But sixteen-year-olds just are, their brains are not developed enough to, I think, to be voting. And I think, you know, it could become kind of like a popularity contest, not good thinking. It's not straightforward. If we're really going to consider this, I'd like to send you an article if you if you guys will like it. About, I just was reading the other day about the teenage brain in preparation of this. Because kids, kids do things because they think they're invincible. They do things because it's, it sounds great. They 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 pile on. They don't, I'm not saying all kids, okay? Some of us had very mature sixteen-year-olds. I did have one of my three children. That could have voted at ten, all right? But it's just, um, I just don't think it's a good idea. And I'll be, if you read it, I'll send an article out.
Yes, please, send it to everyone. Do not reply all, but please send it. Thank you very much. Appreciate those very thoughtful comments.
Steve.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just some, just some background data. Uh, so in Maryland, Tacoma Park, Greenbelt, Hyattsville, Riverdale Park and Mount Rainier. Have uh, um. Changed the warning age, lowered the warning age to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. So there's some sort of. Potential data from that. I think Tacoma Park might have even been the first city in the US to do that. So we are in in sort of. In even considering this and interesting company in in the state. Um. And in the country. Uh, second, I understand that it has led to greater civic participation by sixteen-year-olds. So that's the sort of flip side. Young people in in civic activities and we might want to look at some of the data coming out of of these towns. And it has also led to overall uh, greater water participation. I don't know if that's a challenge for our town. I don't know what the data is for our town. Um, but that's what I have understood from what these towns have have implemented.
Right. Thank you, Kabir. Robin?
Yeah, actually, the brain doesn't stop development till age twenty-five, so maybe we should not have a voting.
Let's raise it.
I was not going down that slippery slope.
That's right.
I I was staying clear of.
Shrinking around age thirty, so we get a very narrow window.
Let's raise it to sixty-five.
Exactly.
Um. Hmm.
No, I'm in favor of 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 voting sixteen. I think absolutely it increases participation and that's an important thing and helps them to be more mature, which is is part of it.
But but there are trade-offs. Uh, so that's, as Debbie noted. Uh, Shannon?
Um, I am neutral. I don't really, I mean, I think I would like to know more information. I don't really, I I can go both ways.
Uh, fair enough. Um, so so thank you. It's almost seven thirty. I just wanted to get the topic out there, get folks thinking about it. Um, I'm actually very glad to hear people from sharing different perspectives and the pros and cons. Um. And I'll I'll probably um. Add this to the working session next month and maybe try and do a bit of research myself.
I I think, I I'm going to suggest that Lucy Friedman, who a member of our Board of Elections. Who is a huge advocate for this, I think that she needs to um. It would be good if she wrote an op-ed in the journal. And also, one, one thing that I had, I'm a hu- huge advocate for this and. I I think we need to, the the ones who need to testify in favor of this are the sixteen-year-olds. And we can see how well. You know, how interested they are.
That's a great suggestion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, will you take care of uh, content?
Yes, I will, I will.
Thank you very much.
I will.
Okay, that's, we got through everything. It is seven thirty. Any last questions, comments?
Thank you all and uh, happy holiday season.
Yes.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
New years.
Yes.
And happy new years.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Matt, for everything. Thank you, Jeffrey. Bye.
Thank you, everybody. Great meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.